This evening, it went right away and said.
Good evening. Time being seven o'clock, I call the April 13th, 2022 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Announcements from the Chair. All citizens are now welcome to attend public board and committee meetings in person. Meetings are live streamed by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 11 and Verizon Channel 29. In an effort to maximize citizen engagement opportunities, citizens will be able to continue to participate remotely via phone, or you may click the Zoom link that is on the posted agenda and on the town's website. The phone number is 929-205-6099, and the Zoom ID is 859-504-004004. Once again, the meeting ID is 859-504-04004. If residents are just interested in watching the meeting, it will also be live streamed by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 11 and Verizon Channel 29. Tonight, Counselor Frangillo will be participating remotely. And I think that's all I have for comments from the Chair. Citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. The town council will give remarks appropriate consideration and may ask the town administrator to review the matter. Is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing nobody in council chambers, I will look to Zoom, and I know, I think I see at least one hand up. David, if you'd just unmute yourself and name and address, please.
Good evening. David Rittenhouse, 2400 Run. Thank you for the opportunity to make a citizen's comment. I'm a climate activist and member of a group called 350 Mass. Our meetings are open to the public and are announced via the Franklin Matters newsletter. The climate crisis has become increasingly difficult to ignore in the last few years. Just last week, torrential rains, flash flood in Australia. I always pay attention to the American Southeast because I have friends and relatives there, and tornadoes are happening there with increasing frequency, numbers, and severity all over the South. Often, the whole clusters are part of a strong weather front that's passing through. Every time, I worry about my friends' and family's safety. In July of 2020, there were flash floods that caused significant damage to Norwood Hospital. It used to be it was helpful to know if you needed an umbrella or not, but now with climate change making weather more severe, it's just not a casual thing anymore. It'll only get worse unless we take bold action. Yes, it's been a big problem, and yes, Franklin is only one town, but everyone needs to do their part, from individual action to town-wide initiatives to coordinating on regional and state levels. Franklin can take bold action. I'm very pleased with the progress Franklin has made with town electric vehicles, LED street lighting, and being a green community. Franklin schools and town buildings get 95% of their electrical power from local solar panels. That's fantastic. Currently, 80% of Massachusetts towns and cities are designated green communities, and I'm glad we're part of that effort. We can do more. I would like to see these additional actions. One, make efforts to move new construction away from oil and gas heat to electric heat pumps. This is part of the initiative to convert a million homes by 2030 per the state legislature. I'd also like to see a change in bylaws for new construction to require 240-volt EV outlets in garages on new construction. Also, with new construction, give preference to multi-housing projects that would use a geothermal heating and cooling grid system. This is being done in Framingham. And last item for tonight is join the 17 cities and towns of Mass Energize, a nonprofit building community involvement in climate-friendly individual actions. By joining Mass Energize, we would become part of the 5% of Mass communities committed to doing more and building community involvement. Thank you for hearing my comments encouraging Franklin to take additional steps in climate action. Please consider joining our next 350 Mass meeting via Zoom, April 21st at 7:00 PM. Thank you and have a good meeting.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else out in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda?
I don't see anyone.
A few more coming in. I don't see any. Do you, Alicia?
I don't see anyone.
Okay. Okay, moving forward. We have no minutes this evening. Next item on the agenda is proclamations and recognitions, and we do have one this evening. Recognition of Roger Magalhers, recipient of the Immigrant Learning Center's Barry M. Portnoy Immigrant Entrepreneur Award in Outstanding Business Growth. And I will ask Counselor Hamblin, who brought this to us a couple of meetings ago, to read the proclamation. Sure.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, Roger, you have to come over here with me, okay? It's okay. These guys are all safe. It's all right. First, congratulations. I'm going to read this to you. You want to face that way? Okay. You can read it. Town of Franklin, proclamation honoring Roger Magalhers on receiving the Immigrant Learning Center's Barry M. Portnoy Immigrant Entrepreneur Award in Outstanding Business Growth. Whereas Roger Magalhers originates from Sao Paulo, Brazil, where he studied robotics before moving to the United States in 2000, where in 2006, he started a small home-based window installation business called Shades in Place, Inc. And whereas, since relocating the business to Franklin in 2011, Mr. Magalhers has obtained extensive industry knowledge, including holding certifications for several leading product lines, having attended the Custom Home Furnishing Academy for drapery and soft treatment techniques, and by currently holding the position of Director-at-Large of the National Board of Directors of the Window Coverings Association of America. And whereas, Mr. Magalhers has also achieved far-reaching recognition on being named one of the seven top window fashion influencers by Window Fashion Vision Magazine in 2020, and by being a regular columnist for the Window Fashion Vision Magazine, a presenter at the International Window Coverings Expo, and the installation instructor for Window Fashion Certified Professional Fast Track Program. And whereas, Mr. Magalhers founded a second company in 2020 called Trading Up Consulting LLC, which offers installation, training, and business coaching to people both established and new to the window treatment industry. And whereas, Roger Magalhers was awarded the Immigrant Learning Center 2022 Barry M. Portnoy Immigrant Entrepreneur Award in Outstanding Business Growth on March 8, 2022. Now therefore being known that Roger Magalhers is hereby commended and recognized by the Town Council of the Town of Franklin for outstanding achievement in business growth and mentorship and outstanding contribution to Franklin's economic well-being. Signed, Thomas D. Mercer, Chair of the Franklin Town Council. Thank you so much.
She mentioned I'm from Brazil, and the only thing I want to say, America is a great place, land of opportunities. If you see something, you can get it here. Thank you so much.
I'm back. I'm back.
Thank you, Mel. Okay, appointments, we do not have any this evening. Hearings, we do have Chief. Jamie, you want to do a lead-in, please?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Good news is, is we don't do these often here at the council level, which is really good news.
Yeah, for sure.
And just, I'm going to let the Chief and Lieutenant Zimmerman go through the report. And I just want to mention for the folks watching at home in the council, I'll review if there are any questions at the end. There is a bylaw that we have in town on these matters, and so if folks have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them after the presentation.
Yes. Attorney Sorrell.
So in my tenure here, this is, I don't believe all the violators, alleged violators are present. In my experience, we've never had a situation previously where they didn't show up or respond for the hearing.
Yes.
Exactly. So I would recommend, first of all, if you determine if anybody's here on behalf of any of the three licensees, and then determine how we best proceed.
Okay. Counselor Jones had a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, through you, to Mr. Sorrell, would you have an opportunity, would you take an opportunity to explain to the council as a whole what our responsibilities are in regarding to these types of hearings?
Only because we have some counselors that have never.
So I had alluded to this during the workshop right after you were sworn in, but you're basically sitting as, this is administrative age, you're performing an administrative function as opposed to usual legislative function. You're actually going to sit as hearing officers to determine whether or not there's been a violation of the liquor laws with respect to the various licensees. And therefore, your role is really passive. It's to allow the Chief and his associate to present, and if there's any counter from the, anybody, any particular case, to allow them to respond, but basically, other than questions for clarification, you pretty much should basically sit there like you were on a jury and just listen. And once that's done, the hearings are closed, then we can discuss what the disposition would be if you determined that the violations occurred. And again, returning to my point, I would start by determining if we have any of the licensees or the representatives present.
Thank you, Attorney Sorrell. You all set?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I know we have at least one here. I know Jimmy Dees is here. I don't know if there's anyone from TM1 Solutions. Is there anybody in the council chambers or on Zoom from TM1 Solutions?
I don't see anybody.
I don't either. How about from Dharma Bhakti Corporation, Doing Business as Liquor World? I don't see anybody there. And just confirm, Jim. Okay, thank you, Jim.
Debbie has a question.
A question before we go through with all of this. I'd just like to know through you, were they invited to come tonight or told to come tonight?
There was a.
Attorney Sorrell.
There was a notice of hearing mailed to all three, but it was first-class mail, wasn't return receipt or anything like that. So on the other hand, they didn't come back unclaimed or undeliverable either. So I think you have two options, Mr. Chairman, with due respect. One would be to proceed with this one and then treat the other two the same way in absentia, let the police make their presentation and dispose of it. However, you do with this particular licensee, since they're all essentially the same, they're in the same situation, alternatively would be to continue those two, make sure, have service made in hand of the hearing, and then proceed at a separate date. They're frankly not time-sensitive. These occurred back in March, I believe, really March, so either option.
But I don't think that answered my question. In the letter that they received, the contents, did it say that they were requested to be here tonight?
The standard letter, yes, we've always used.
And it did, okay. Because I think that's very important.
Again, as I said, I've never had the experience where not only one doesn't show up, but two don't. That's concerning to me.
That's important. Thank you.
Jamie? Thank you, Counselor.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, through the council. I just, to Attorney Sorrell's point, I just want to highlight, I was going to highlight at the end, but I might as well now. The town bylaw has a recommended series, if there is a violation, there's a recommendation in the bylaw, but also beneath that, there are aggravating and mitigating factors to the bylaw based on the presentation at the hearing. And of course, it leaves it wide open to some degree, where not showing up at a hearing or other things could be used by the council as an additional penalty to the factor. So showing up, admitting the violation, treat those as you want to be treated, you know, the golden rules of life are written in the bylaw to help mitigate them. And there's factors right here to aggravate the violation as well. So I just want to point that out, and that is fully within the council's jurisdiction to make those decisions within the framework of the town code. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Mark, just for a point of clarification, is it one hearing, or are they individual hearings?
Your individual hearing.
Okay. So since we do have one representative here, I think it's only fair that certainly we start with that one. So Chief, if you'd like to, I declare the hearing for Jimmy Dees LLC, Doing Business as Jimmy Dees, 338 Union Street, open. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. As some of you may know, I know Counselor Chandler definitely does, for years, I ran the operations as a lieutenant for the grants that we got for our compliance checks and this and that. So I'm passing the baton to Lieutenant Zimmerman, who ended up putting this all together, running this operation at my request. So I will have him, actually, he's going to paraphrase the letter that you all have, that he had sent to me pertaining to the incident that occurred, the operation that occurred on March 2nd, and then he can go into specifics with the Jimmy Dees.
Thank you, Chief. Lieutenant Zimmerman?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. I'll just paraphrase, as the Chief said. On Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022, the community service unit supplemented by the patrol division conducted a compliance check of the liquor establishments licensed in Franklin. Of the 33, we visited 33 pre-assigned establishments, they were broken up into three teams. Our teams consisted of two police officers coupled with one underage decoy. Underage decoy is 18, 19 years old, a high school student, college student, and they're provided with no ID. We take their ID from them prior to the event, and so they can't go in and provide any ID, false or otherwise, or their actual ID. We instruct them prior to going into these establishments, they're not in any way to, you know, give a false date of birth, a false age. They're going, and if confronted, either present, ask their ID, they either respond that they don't have it, or ask for their date of birth or their age, to give their actual date of birth or age. So there's no intent to deceive anyone, deceive anyone, or trick anyone. That's made very clear. So that's referred to as the no ID protocol. They don't have any ID with them. So again, broken into three teams, two police officers accompanied with one underage decoy. We visited 33 establishments. Of the 33 establishments at the time, six of them were either closed or not serving alcohol at that time. All right, so 27 remaining, we visited those 27 remaining, 24 passed and either requested ID, or their date of birth, or asked their age of the decoys, resulting in a passing. The decoy then leaves the establishment. Three failed the compliance check, and the three, as we already mentioned, were Liquor World, 7-Eleven on Union Street, and Jimmy Dees Restaurant. Two were off-premise license holders, Liquor World and 7-Eleven. The underage decoy was able to go in, purchase a six-pack of Bud Light beer, pay for it without being asked about their age, date of birth, or asked for ID, and then exit the store. The police officers were outside waiting for.
We're on Jimmy Dees. So if we're just speak to Jimmy Dees for this hearing.
My apologies.
That's okay. No problem.
So Jimmy Dees is on-premise. The decoy was able to enter the establishment, sat at the bar, ordered one bottle of Bud Light. They were not confronted about their age, date of birth, or requested for any form of ID. They were served the bottle of light, a bottle of Bud Light. The bartender walked away after serving the bottle of Bud Light to the underage decoy. The underage decoy then leaves money on the bar, exits the bar, and immediately tells the officers outside what occurred. Later on, after we complete all of the visits and all of the checks, the officers returned to the establishments that failed to identify through the decoy's description who the server was. They go in, identify who this server was, and at that point, put them on notice that they'll be notified by the department and town hall at a later date.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I go to Jimmy. If you'd just like to come up, introduce yourself and.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim DeVito. I'm the owner of Jimmy Dees Bar and Grill, and I'm not going to challenge this citation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So with that noted, just to point back to the bylaw that is included in the packet, there's a first offense, second offense, third offense, aggravating mitigating factors, and it's within the conference jurisdiction. I think in the past.
We look for a recommendation from Lieutenant Zimmerman?
We have done that.
That's what we've done in the past.
That's what we've done the best. Yes, Mr. Chairman, no.
Which is basically the same.
This is a first offense. We've never had any issues with Jimmy Dees alcohol-related ever, including past compliance checks where they passed them with no problems. So this is the first.
Okay, so Attorney Sorrell.
So the practice, in all due respect, just for clarification purposes, there's two parts to the bylaw. There's for compliance checks, and that's pretty straightforward with the progression. And then there's for actual violations. In other words, the police respond and observe a real sale, and that's got more flexibility to it. So first offenses here have been traditionally two, I mean, three days imposed, one served, two held in abeyance for two years. Generally, also the same day as, again, this is discretionary with you, but to be served on the day, the same day of the week as the offense was noted. And the other thing is, if, I understand he's admitted to it, so there's not going to be an appeal, but typically, you have, if there weren't, if there was any dispute, it would be at least five days in the future to give them an opportunity to appeal the ABCC.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Counselor Jones.
Just as part of the proceedings, can we request as part of the acknowledgement of the violation, any mitigation that the violator may take in order to avoid future potential violations? What mitigation is the violator going to take?
If he wants to, if he wants to address what responses, if any, he's employed in his operations, he's free to do so.
Am I fair to ask, Mr. Chairman, what the violator may do?
Yeah, we're supposed to be listening.
Oh, no, I understand. Okay.
So Jimmy, if you'd like to, please.
Hello again. I reviewed the selling of alcohol protocol, everyone, you know, the steps that you have to take. Make sure you ID first, even if you're busy. Don't put a bottle down, and everyone is tip-certified, re-tip-certified. So I just have to stay on, just got to babysit, basically, got to babysit every night.
Totally understand. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Any other questions? Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I know Mr. DeVito just mentioned that he needs to stay on these people, but I have to say that there was no manager present in that establishment. We all know that it could be an 18-year-old serving alcohol. So I don't know who was on, who was supposed to be watching the employees, but there was no manager present. It's right in the report. Hi, sir.
Hello. I was the manager that night, and I've also hired another manager, I forgot to say that. I had a fellow by the name of James Fernandez, and he's doing his, the food service training, so that I can get him right on board. Serve safe, yeah. He's doing the serve safe and the algeons, so I can get him right on. And he's doing the tips, too. But I was there. I did go out for 20 minutes. I generally do that, maybe go for a walk and loosen up a little bit. It's a very unforgiving business. But I wasn't there. I was back, just as the detectives left, so.
No, I appreciate it. I just wanted to express how important it is to have.
I agree. I agree. I'm also the CPR person, and I've done that three times there. So.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counsel Plegory.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. DeVito, is that your name? How long did this individual work for you? Had he been working for you?
I think seven months.
That's an irrelevant question.
I would have to go back to, actually, look to get the exact dates, but it's about seven months, I think. Right after COVID.
What's sad is, this person that served a minor could have been doing this prior to that, but that's only a guess. I'm just saying, if you stepped out, it could have happened before. We have to be thankful that there were no accidents and no terrible things that happened. I really have a problem with this person, you know, not asking for ID and serving someone.
Counsel Plegory, this isn't really in our realm, those comments really. He can hire whoever he wants, as long as.
Oh, I didn't say about hiring, yeah.
So.
We're just a jury.
Attorney Sorrell, for your general knowledge, as I indicated, the bylaw has two separate processes. There's a reason for that, because the ABCC requires it. The ABCC takes a very restricted view of compliance check process as opposed to actual violations. So you're on very, you've got to follow a very strict procedure on the compliance and non-compliances, and that's what we're trying to walk you through right now.
But the establishment has to be under strict compliance also, to follow the rules and regulations. So.
Yes.
That's it for right now.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a recommendation in part to the violator. Since the licensee has made an acknowledgement of the violation, I think I'd like to follow our normal protocol.
our normal protocol, which as suggested by the town attorney, was that three days with one day served, two days held in advance for up to two years.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, it's a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't finish it. To be served on the day, same day of the week, on the same day of the violation.
On Wednesday, correct?
Is that a Wednesday?
Yes, it was.
Yes. So if we could just pick the day so that we'll know?
Sure.
Twentieth? Twentieth's fine.
Okay.
I'd like to get it cleared up very quick.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the twentieth.
Yes, sir.
As part of the, as part of the motion.
I need a second for that.
Second.
Are we still?
Yep, we're still in discussion.
Can still ask questions to you, right?
Yep.
Can, can this be directed to the police officer?
Through me to the...
Through you to the police officers? Is that what's being proposed satisfactory to you, gentlemen? Because you're the ones that are out there policing the streets. So I feel like in respect to you, I want to know that this is acceptable.
For me, yeah, I'm one of the people that push for the bylaws to be what it is. After all the time of doing it, yes, so no, you know, yeah, very satisfied.
Okay. So that there weren't different, different things going on. That's why we put this bylaw, these...
Just in respect to them, I want to make sure that their officers would feel like this exercise had some meaning.
Totally agree. Thank you. Counselor Comey, alleged. Counselor Plegory.
Friendly, through you, a friendly amendment to the, Mr. Jones, Counselor Jones. I would like to ask why you chose the minimum three rather than four or five-day suspension.
To explain the motion, ma'am, it really simply has to do with the mitigating factors where the licensee had acknowledged the violation openly with, with regret to the situation, and that is our standard issue for anyone who's done such in the past. We don't, we want to be fair, not only to the current, but the past people who've also had violations.
Would the maker of the motion be willing to take a, a four-day suspension on that?
My motion stands, ma'am.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Plegory. And again, this is what, the motion that's on the floor is what we have done. I've been here, I've been here for eleven years, and it is the exact same punishment for first-time offenders, is what we're proposing, or what the motion that Mr. Jones has made. So is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to just say, the, the people that we have given violations to in the past, we have not seen come back. So it seems like it's a good enough punishment.
Fair enough.
Can't tell whether your hand's going, whether your hand's going up, Counselor Chandler. Okay, seeing no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Sorry, I got the wrong sheet for it. I know, I should have been prepared. I know, it's supposed to be good. Comey, Ledger.
Yes.
Patrick Sheridan.
Yes.
Brian Chandler.
Yes.
Colby Frangello.
Yes.
Plegory.
No.
No. Hamblin.
Yes.
Jones, yes. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
That is eight, and eight yes and one no, sir.
Motion carries. Mr. DeVito, thank you for...
Thank you.
Thank you for appearing this evening.
Thank you.
Sir.
What's the, will of the, I'll open a... Open a hearing on PM One Solutions, Inc., doing business as 7-Eleven. I declare that hearing open, and Lieutenant Zimmerman, it's all yours.
Thank you very much, Jim. Again, following the same protocol as described earlier, at approximately quarter past six on March second, the underage decoy entered the 7-Eleven at 664 Union Street in Franklin, walked to the refrigerated section of the store, selected a six-pack of Budweiser Light cans, approached the checkout desk. The decoy placed the six-pack on the counter, and the male clerk rang up the sale for eight dollars and ninety cents, and the decoy paid and left the store. He's not asked to produce any identification or challenge on his age.
Okay. Thank you. And I will once again ask if there is anybody in the council chambers from 7-Eleven or on Zoom. I'm not seeing anybody. Attorney Sorrell.
It's, it would be my recommendation on this and the other, assuming that nobody's present, that they be continued, and that notice be served by the police on the licensee of the next hearing date. If they still don't attend, then you can take that into account, but I'd be surprised if that's the case.
Counselor Jones.
Mr. Chairman, motion to continue the hearing?
Second.
Motion is second to continue the hearing. Discussion on the motion?
To a date and time.
Until May fourth?
Excuse me, sir. Can we, how, how, how can we make a date without getting word back from the violator?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, so we can set the date. Okay, perfect. So May fourth would be the next date?
May fourth would be the next date.
So motion to continue to May fourth, seven o'clock, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Comey, Ledger.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Frangello.
Yes.
Plegory.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Jones, yes. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Nine to zero to continue, sir.
Motion carries to continue the public hearing. Next, I would declare the hearing open for Dharma Bhakti Corporation doing business as Liquor World. Lieutenant Zimmerman.
You're up.
Yeah. Just put my notes down here. So approximately 6:46 PM on, on March third, 2022, the decoy entered Liquor World located at 365 West Central Street. The decoy picked up a six-pack of Bud Light cans out of the refrigerated section, purchased the six-pack, six-pack at the front counter. The decoy used seven dollars to purchase the beer, which was provided through the Franklin Police Department. The decoy exited the store. The decoy was asked, was not asked to provide an ID, nor was he questioned about his age.
Mr. Jones.
Go ahead.
Let me first make sure that there is nobody in the council chambers from Liquor World? And is there anyone out in Zoom land from Liquor World? Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing until May fourth, seven o'clock. That's it.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Comey, Ledger.
Yes.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Plegory.
Yes.
Jones, yes. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Nine to zero to continue, sir.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Sorry, but we'll see on May fourth.
We will, coming anyway.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant Zimmerman. Thank you, chief. Okay, moving on, we have no licensed transactions. Next item on the agenda is presentation and discussions. Presentation from community planning, DHCD multi-family housing guidelines for MBTA communities. Brian Taverner, Director, Planning and Community Development. Brian, please.
Take some...
And Amy, why don't you do the introductions?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, you're going to see a fairly short presentation on, it's a presentation that's required of each community that is considered a MBTA community with the state. Okay, good, we're running here, so there is a, there is new requirements for multifamily zoning in MBTA communities, and that's what we're here to talk about. So over the few, last few years, the Baker administration and many state legisla, others in legislature, legislature and state agencies have worked to address our current housing crisis. There have been a variety of programs that have been developed and laws that have been passed. One such law is the reason for the presentation. As part of the economic development bill, in January 2021, the state enacted a new section 3A of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, which is the zoning act, which requires that an MBTA community permit multifamily housing as of right by meeting certain criteria. The MBTA guidelines related to section 3A are that each MBTA community shall have at least one zoning district of reasonable size, in which multifamily housing is permitted as of a right, and meets other correct criteria set forth in the statute. These zoning districts, and I say districts because they can be more than one district, it doesn't have to be one zoning district. They have to have a minimum gross density of fifteen housing units per acre, not more than a half a mile from a communal rail station, subway station, or other MBTA resource. No age restrictions on them, so they can't be for senior housing only, or things of that nature. And they should be suitable for families with children. More recently, as part, as required by the section 3A, the H Department of Housing and Community Development drafted implementation guidelines. One requirement of each MBTA community is to be, is to present the draft guidelines to the town council, which is the reason for your presentation. Draft guidelines outline a two-part test to determine a reasonable-size zoning district. Minimum land area is one, and that is basically defined as a multifamily district must comprise of at least fifty acres of land within a half-mile of a transit station. Has to have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, and that's subject to any further limitations imposed by relevant aspects of the state environmental code. For instance, if there's a ten-acre pond right next to it, you might, you know, the area, obviously, you're not going to have the units in the pond area, and things of that nature, or similar issues. Needs to be a minimum multifamily unit capacity is the other guideline of the two-part test. And the multifamily capacity is a number of units based on a percentage of the total housing units within the community. Franklin, as of the 2020 census, had 12,551 housing units. And as a MBTA community with communal rail service, required to have a zoning district that would allow at least fifteen percent in density for multifamily housing. So the fifteen percent of the 12,551 comes out to 1,883 units. Now, the 1,883 units are either existing units, or they're, it could be, or they're future units. But what it is, is we're zoning for it. It's not that they will happen, or they have happened, but it's an area, a zoning district that, at a minimum, we can attain that many housing units if the whole district were built out with multifamily housing. I just want to make one point before we go further, and that is that we currently have downtown commercial zoning district. And that zoning district already has up to twenty-two housing units per acre by right of multifamily housing. That zone alone can take up almost a third of the 1,800, right off the bat. So, and, and I say that because we don't see 600 housing units in, in that, in that zone. It's not going, automatically happened that hundreds and hundreds of housing units are going to be built in that for that reason. You're, you're, you're already doing it in a third of the sections, in a third of the zoning that we have to obtain. The statute provides that a district of reasonable size shall be located not more than a half-mile from a communal rail station. The draft guidelines that DHCD came out with actually state that with communities like ours, with some land within a half-mile of a transit station, where we, we require at least half of the land of the as-of-right zoning district be located within that prescribed distance. So only, in that half-mile radius, only half the 1,880 of my units have to be within that half-mile. The rest can be farther out in other directions. So, and as a note, several districts can be included in the half-mile distance, such as downtown commercial, the C-1 district, the general residential five, and other districts. So I wanted to, I, I made this up the other day, I just drew a circle around the train station right in the middle of this, okay? The purple area in the middle is the downtown commercial district, and as I stated, we already have zoning for about a third of the MBTA units, if you want to call it that, in that area. Also within the circle is about half of the C-1 zoning in town, the vast majority of the general residential five zoning, and a lot of the, substantial amount of the single-family residential four zoning districts. So half, and within a half-mile radius, obviously, we're talking, at least half of the land of the as-of-right zoning should be located in that zone, in that circle right So just to give you a little rundown on the, the draft guidelines and the current requirements. The public process that Department of Housing and Community Development held ended on March 31st. They accepted input on the process, on the regulations. Many communities in the state were unhappy for one reason or the other. Most of the ones that had some of the bigger problems was some of the smaller communities that don't actually have train stations, or things of that nature. So right now, the MBTA communities are required to complete an online MBTA community information form by May 20, sorry, May 2nd of this year. That form is a fairly easy form filled out online, and one of the questions is, have you discussed these guidelines with your Board of Selecting or Town Councils? So that's the reason we're here. We can check that box off after tonight. So to, we, I want to make everybody understand that this is interim compliance right now. By filling out that form, we, we do it, we got this meeting tonight, then we are, we, we are in compliance with the regulations, and that we can continue to apply for the Mass Works and Housing Choice Community Grants. If we decided not to be in compliance, we'd not be, we'd not be able to apply for those The final guidelines, which I don't know when they'll be out, but I'm assuming it'll be a few months from now, by the time they actually, it might be another year, who knows, by the time the state comes up with their final guidelines. Once the guidelines are developed, communities will be expected to take affirmative steps towards the creation of a compliant multifamily district. We don't really know what the multifamily district is going to look like at this point, or even what the guidelines are going to look like, because there are draft guidelines right now. So what we just showed you may actually change. But for now, we're supposed to show you this as a, as a, you know, what the draft guidelines were to show, and we are being compliant, and we'll be able to continue with our draft...
Always like being compliant.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, so deadlines, I just want to go, if you can go back one second, I just, it, in the long run, after the guidelines are actually, they become a permanent, you know, a permanent guideline, we, we will need, we'll have until 2024 to actually pass any zoning that may be required to meet the guidelines, okay? So we have, we're lucky in some respects that even before the guidelines came out, we were conceiving a zoning project for the downtown. We were dealing with... We were dealing with inclusionary zoning issues, and, you know, possibly changing density in other, in other zones, which come, they're really hand-in-hand with what we, what the MBTA guidelines are. So, the multifamily zoning requirements being addressed are part of, they're being part of the Franklin for All project. Our consultants will be developing recommendations on ways to possibly meet the MBTA community requirements, based on the draft guidelines as of right now. So, the specific recommendations for potential zoning changes, including how best to address the new requirements, will be developed over the summer and fall, and we don't expect that very quickly we're going to have an answer to what's best for the community, or for, you know, to meet the MBTA guidelines. We're going to take our time and do what we were going to do anyway. And, but just so, I want to note that the town shouldn't have a difficult time addressing the MBTA community requirements, based on all the discussions we have up to this point about possible zoning changes anyway. Right now, our, our commercial 1 and our general residential 5 districts already allow 43 units per, up to that much per acre, but it's a special permit, okay? So if we do something simple, like go, okay, you can have 15 by right, and if you want more, it's a special permit. I mean, things like that, that'll end up addressing a lot of the problems that we're, you know, we're dealing with now, and also the MBTA requirements, but, and that's not to say that what the town's going to do, because it's not my, it's not my job. I am, the, Melanie and the, and the, the subcommittee, the steering committee is doing a great job, and they will continue to steer, and, and we'll end up with some great recommendations, I'm sure. So, I think it's time, if you have any questions, be happy to take them.
Jamie, anything to add?
Through, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd add is, I just want everybody who's watching at home, and listening at home, and taking the survey, and participated so far, to continue to participate, and just let everybody know, zoning changes are a, as all of you know, are an extensively long process to change. There is, there's no rush, you can't rush zoning bylaw changes, and so I just want folks that are out there to stay in tune, sign up for our email notification list, and just realize this is a marathon, not a sprint, and, and there'll be plenty of opportunity for feedback, changes, ideas, questions, over the months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions from councillors, Councilor Deloco?
Thank you, through, Mr. Chairman. I'm just kind of curious, we're going to have to do this at Forge Park, too?
All right, so, one of the, the things that we found out at one of our, the workshops we've attended, is that we do have two stations. If we would like to, we can put some of the units at one station and some in the other, but we don't have to. We don't have to double up.
Oh, that's what I was just kind of curious, that do we have to?
Right. So it's simply the 1,800, whatever, units, it's all we need, and seeing we don't have any, we do have one 40B multifamily down the street, okay? But we, the rest of it is either industrial land, commercial, or a single-family developed, you know, neighborhood.
Okay, I was just curious.
So we could do something there if we really wanted to, but I, my thought is that because there's a good chance we're going to meet the needs of the MBTA guidelines just in the downtown, and surrounding areas, that we probably focus on that.
Okay.
But that's, to be determined.
Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, zoning, it just makes my eyes glaze over. I apologize to the residents, because I am so weak at this zoning stuff, but just bear with me for one second, and just tell me maybe if I have this right. With this presentation, we can apply for grants, we're compliant, and we shouldn't have any difficulty addressing and meeting the requirements.
In the long run, I believe that's true.
So it's good, it's all?
It is something we have to do today, and that's the reason we're here, otherwise, everything's going to happen over the course of the next couple of years, in reality. It's not, it's not going to be rushing into anything, we're going to, we're doing what we have to. In the meantime, we have to continue with the projects that we're working on, so.
Thank you for being knowledgeable on this, and thank you to the steering committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler, that was a great summary of what we're, of what we're doing tonight. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, sorry, everybody, through the chair. Thank you, Brian and Amy, for being here tonight. I think it's, it's great, I know it seems kind of silly to, to show us draft, the draft proposals, and that we have to check a box, but I think the more people know and understand what's happening, it's, the better, right? So, so that's why it's important, I think, for people to be able to start to think about it when they hear MBTA community, then they'll be like, oh yeah, remember, like, we have to think about maybe zoning, potential zoning for more units, and it's the zoning, not the building. So this is just about allowing things to be built. It doesn't mean it's going to be built. I do have a question, I know that I saw a proposal about this, and it was that we could separate, since we have two stations, and I was wondering if, in more recent drafts, if they had a definition of units, like, is it one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, it doesn't?
A housing unit is a housing unit, regardless of size.
Housing unit, okay, all right. So that was one of the questions I had heard after one of the Franklin for All forums, and I think Counselor Deloco already asked that question, and Counselor Chandler already made that statement, so that was what I was going to say. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Any other councillors? Counselor Frangello, anything to add?
His hand is up.
There he is.
Sure, I would just remind everyone that this is, this is good. We want this in our community, and just encouraging us in the right direction. Rezoning our downtown leads to a, you know, more equitable, safer, healthier, affordable, accessible community, and we're looking forward to this process.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Is there anyone in? Jamie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, and to set the edge on this issue, on the Forge Park concept, I just want to make sure there are potentially a little bit, there's a little bit of opportunity there. I just want to remind everybody that the landowners that are around that area include the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, MassDOT, the MBTA, the Bernard Family Trust, which owns a very large piece of land, multiple pieces of land over there, and then a little, kind of, couple small neighborhoods in the back. I think in the long view, we've talked about this as a staff, that Forge Park, because of the location right off the interstate, and right off 140, it's a very, very unique area over there, and there has been at least conversations that I've talked about publicly, I've reached out to the Bernard Family Trust and other entities to talk about that. I just think from the state's perspective, that eventually, if they see too much going to Forge Park, there's going to be a back and forth about what's really feasible, because there's so much state-owned land over there, and obviously Dairy Farmers of America, and some other pretty big, non-buildable parcels. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in council chambers that has a question or a comment? Is there anybody out in Zoom land?
Does MJ have a hand up? What is that?
Okay, seeing none. Brian, thank you. Amy, thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Check the box.
There you go.
Thank you for bringing us into compliance. We'll look forward to it. Moving on, legislation for action. Resolution 22-26, acceptance of easement of property at 732 Washington Street. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 22-26, acceptance of easements of property at 732 Washington Street. Whereas Matthew J. Gordon and Angela Raffino Gordon are the owners of certain parcel land located at 732 Washington Street in Franklin, described in a deed dated December 29th, 1995, and recorded at Norfolk Registry of Deeds in Book 11172 and Page 495. Whereas Matthew J. Gordon and Angela Raffino Gordon, having agreed to grant to the town of Franklin a permanent easement over, under, and through that portion of granted land shown as eight feet long by six feet wide, single easement number two area, which is equal to approximately 48 square feet, plus or minus, on a sketch plan of land captioned "Plan of Easements for AM 322 Lot 35, Washington Street and Grove Street Intersection Improvements." Franklin, Mass, said easement area containing 48 square feet, more or less according to said plan, executed a grant of easement to the town of Franklin, together with a copy of said sketch. Plan attached is Exhibit A. For nominal consideration on March 23rd, 2022, a true copy of said grant of easement is being attached here, too, as Exhibit 1. Now therefore be it ordered that the town of Franklin, acting by and through its town council, accept the grant of easement in true copy, which is attached here, too, as Exhibit 1, and it is further ordered that a true copy of this resolution, together with the original grant of easement, and attachment sketch plan Exhibit A, be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds, and this resolution should become effective, according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Move Charter.
Move Resolution 22-26.
Second.
Motion is second. Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the council. This is the required easement we need, the town needs, and the family's been great to work with, that we need to begin construction on the intersection at Grove and Washington. And our town engineer's here tonight, in case anybody has any questions about the easement, or the timeline of the project. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank the Gordons myself again, because that is really nice to have a light put right in your front yard.
I know.
I know it's an easement and everything, but that is, I know, I asked Mr. Maglio, and they were very, very cordial and polite, and they also did a lot of work, like Doc, like Doc, like Counselor Deloco, with football.
Yeah, they did.
They did a lot of, a lot for the kids.
Took over for me, actually.
Yep, a lot for the kids. So, just wanted to give them a shout-out for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Any other councillors? Okay, seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 22-26, a majority votes required. Clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cormier Ledger.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Frangello.
Yes.
Plegory.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Jones, yes. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Nine zero, sir.
Motion carries, and again, thank you to the Gordon family. Okay, next, Town Administrators' Report. Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The Common Grounds Cafe is open, people should go down and get some fluffy, delicious pancakes, omelets, all sorts of other stuff. A great new chef, I was down there with Alicia and Lily on Monday, and the room was at least half to three-quarters full. Bunch of folks who all of you know, waiting in line, which was exciting to see, and we're just really, really thrilled to have the cafe been up and going again. It's been a long, long time, and just in time for spring. Speaking of the senior center, while you're down there getting your omelet, pancakes, and breakfast, stop by and check out some of the strategic planning seminars they're holding in April. As I announced several months ago, the, the new director and the new staff are going to be doing an engagement effort with the council on aging. For the first time ever, they're attempting to try to put together a strategic, a longer, short and long-term strategic plan. While Alicia and I were down there for a few months, we heard a lot of incredible comments on the wish list from any seniors about what they'd like to see at the center, and so we're opening up a formal public process. And then finally, I was mentioned at the last meeting, but I'll make a plug right now, May 14th, from I believe 9:00 to 1:00 on a Saturday, the Metro West Arts and Culture Symposium, where the head of the Mass Cultural Council will be there, Michael Bobbitt, who's brand-new over the last year, should be an exciting day, and you can hop online and reserve your ticket right now on Eventbrite. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions on Town Administrators' Report? Okay, moving on, Subcommittee Reports. I believe the only one that's met is the EDC, Counselor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the Economic Development Subcommittee met before this meeting tonight. We discussed the West Street, East Street neighborhood follow-up, we discussed the town bylaw parking fines that haven't been looked at for 20 years, so they will come to the full council for discussion and approval. We also discussed changes along the downtown district parking, and that proposal will be coming to the full council as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Any questions for Counselor Hamblin? Okay, moving on, future agenda items. Counselor Cormier Ledger.
None at this time.
Counselor Chandler?
Nothing at this time.
Counsel Plegory?
The only questions I have is about the Davis Thayer School, is that something we could put on for an agenda item? I know it's their responsibility, but...
Yeah.
Yes, then let's put that on, so that we can discuss it. It was supposed to have been turned over in January, I believe, that that's what they had said to us, and now here we are.
Initially, it was before the end of the year.
Right.
End of last year.
Benefit of the doubt to say January, so that would be good.
Sure.
That's all I have.
We can do that?
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Sheridan?
Let me know about these proposals that were brought up at the Citizens' Comments.
Oh, yeah. Sure, we can, we can look at, Jamie?
Excuse me? The presentation?
Yes, the, under Citizens' Comments earlier this evening.
Sure.
Counselor Sheridan would like to...
Response?
Response to this.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else? Counselor Frangello, new business, future agenda items. Thank you. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that if, I would like to see more about massenergize.org, you know, if that can help people in the community learn how to do, be better, then that's what we need. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Jones?
Just to echo Counselor Plegory's comments about the Davis Thayer, I too would like to see it on the future agenda.
Thank you. Counselor Deloco?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Counselor Comments. Counselor Sheridan?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Frangello?
Nothing at the start.
Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted, I hope everybody's out there enjoying spring, and they're getting outside, maybe take a walk, or go on the bike path, or something, it's just, it's just nice to have good weather. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And hopefully you didn't jinx us.
No, I, you know I just did jinx us.
Well, I think Counselor Plegory and I brought it back from... Counselor Cormier Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to say thank you to the Gordon family, that nominal $1 fee for the easement is extremely generous, to let us use that land, especially given current market conditions.
Yes.
And I also wanted to just take a minute and thank the Franklin Special Education Department within our schools, to reflect for just a second. It was one of the reasons why my family moved here, was to get a better education for both of our boys, and both of our kids have individual education plans, and today, we had our meeting on my oldest son at the middle school, so just a shout-out to that extraordinary team, and we got the great news that he no longer needs an IEP, that he has met all of his goals because of the extraordinary work of the Special Ed Department, and the teachers at the school, and the administration, and maybe a little bit because of his family, but I, yeah, maybe. yeah, maybe, but, but I just want to, I just can't say enough about how much those folks do, they go above and beyond with the resources they have to make sure that the kids have what they need, and he is a little boy that is now thriving because of the great work that they're doing, so thank you from the bottom of my heart for that.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier Ledger. Councilor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the Economic Development Committee tonight, and I was moved by a lot of the residents and some of the things that were said, so I came up with a thought on that that I'm going to give to Jamie in a minute, but if you want to listen to it, it wasn't televised by Franklin TV, but Franklin Matters will have it. There was a lot of interesting stuff said. My thought is, I saw the school was saving $100,000 from the health insurance, and they're going to hire an assistant principal. I didn't know with the town's portion of that, could we bring back that civilian parking clerk? Because, I mean, it seems like the business people are upset, the residents are upset, Dean College is upset, I just, I mean, if we have a little extra money that we weren't expecting, it's just, I would like you to think about that when you're going over the budget, because there were a lot of upset people all around, and, and to have a dedicated person like that, that might be able to show a little more compassion to the lady with the, you know, the three-car seats that, you know, just couldn't get back to her car or, you know, just little stuff like that, like that person would be, it would be a good front person for us to, you know, take care of some of the anger and problems, so that's just my thought, if you could look into that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Chandler. Councilor Plegri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was also at the EDC meeting, and people had a lot of good things to say. After the meeting ended, Mrs. Lotzi came up to me, and I hope she doesn't mind me saying this, but she said that with all the cars that are being parked in front of her house and all of that, she said the sweeper went by, and her street wasn't be, wasn't able to be swept because of all those cars there, so what she did was, after they left the next morning, before they got there, whatever the story was, she went out there and she swept herself the street. I says, well, that was very nice of you, now I think we should get a bill together and send it to the, to Dean College and let them take care of it. I'm serious, you know, because, because of their students parking there, it wasn't able to be cleaned the street, and it's not fair to our residents, all right? So, Jamie, that's something that you can talk with her about, and perhaps we can get a little bill together to make our point, stress our point about them parking, you know, right there on that street, so. And since I wasn't around, I don't have very much to say about comments, other than that, and that just happened tonight, but, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Plegri. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to echo Councilor Hamblin's comments regards to a very beautiful day, I just wanted to make a comment in regards to, today, my local had their Women in Industries event, which brought out hundreds of young ladies from around Massachusetts Commonwealth area, from various schools, to visit our school and our local, and have some really thorough discussions about the, both the impact that women are having on industry, as well as ways to kind of educate the young ladies of the Commonwealth in regards to the possibilities in our industry for them to join on, as, I mean, I've always said, anybody can be an electrician, it's no discrimination at all, but it was a great event, it was a great turnout, and it was a beautiful day.
It's a win-win-win.
It's a win-win-win.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Councilor Deloco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to echo Councilor Cormier Ledger's comment, because all three of my kids had IEPs, and they all went through college, and they're all doing great, so they do do a great job down there, so, thank you to them. Jamie, I got a couple calls on the King Street crosswalk, that you put a sign up there, but they're still having, people aren't still stopping up there, so a couple people came up to me, and they, they liked the way the, the, the way it's done down Delcot, if we could look at that to see if it is, because they've had a couple people, one person on Emily Drive had to grab their kid, because the sign's a little too far away from the crosswalk, and I think they're just going by it, so if you can take a look at that, or maybe you have to put another sign on the other side, too, or something, something to do for them, so, because there is a lot of kids across there, certainly now, so, that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Deloco. Okay, and we have no need this evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Non-debatable.
Non-debatable, but roll call vote.
Sorry, guys, not that quick. Cormier Ledger?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Chandler?
Yes.
Frangello?
Yes.
Plegri?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Jones, yes, Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair, nine zero to adjourn, sir.
Thank you, one and all.
Twenty.
Twenty. And the casters get home to have dinner.
So funds, I think it was a million something each direct to the town, but then there were two buckets of, if I recall, three million each that are coming through the county, and that's where, this is the first set being submitted for, et cetera.